Congratulations to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roke.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
For rule of minutes.
Tonight, we have the minutes from council from October 5th, 2021.
So moved. Motion by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents.
Nothing is even.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward.
Do I leave this on?
No, you can take it off.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Catherine McMenamy, and I still live at 19 Willow Place in the city of Middletown. It's been a while. I hope all is well. A couple of things. One, I'd like to thank the Department of Parks and Recreation for redoing the Amshire Park out my way. It's beautiful. They really did a super job. The next thing I'd like to ask is that behind my house, we have a swamp, a canal, whatever you want to call it. Periodically, it needs to be cleaned out and encouraged to drain. I think it's time for that to be done. And I know that Jacob tries to do it on a rotating basis every three to five years, whatever it is. I think it's probably time. The other thing I'm here for is several years back, two maybe, there was an article in the Times-Sel Record regarding a portable ice rink that the village of Slate Hill purchased two at the cost of $5,000 each. They could be used and then put away and used again another year. The cost, I thought, was fair, and it allowed people and kids and families to be able to participate in ice skating, which is a family affair. We have to take now our grandchildren to Newburgh to ice rink to skate. So I think with a population of 26,000 people, that perhaps something like that would be doable for the city of Middletown. And after families and kids skate, the next thing they like to do is eat. So it could be a good situation for recreation for kids and families and for the businesses in the city of Middletown. So I'm hoping that perhaps it's time for budgeting, I guess, and perhaps this is the time for you to figure it in. When I went and spoke to Ms. Christine, Ms. Christine. Pardon me?
Bring her off.
Park and Rec, previous Park and Rec.
Yes, the previous one. Right, right. I brought her that information, and she looked at it and read it, and she kept it on file. So I'm just hoping that my timing is right and that you might consider doing something like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Okay, anyone else who would like to address the council?
Good evening again. Joel Sierra, county legislator for the city of Middletown, District 20. Just to give you an update, Heritage Trail is coming along nicely. The bridges were put in this week. If you don't know, they were salvaged pieces of the old Tappan Zee Bridge. So they were reclaimed, reused, and they were installed, and construction is coming along. It should be done, hopefully, before the snow falls. But we're getting there. We're getting there.
With snow.
It'll be completed. Hopefully, hopefully. It should be completed up to the East Main Street corridor. Other than that, election day is tomorrow. I'd like to make sure I remind all the residents of the city of Middletown to get out and express your right to vote, and wish all of you good luck tomorrow. Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Eileen, do we have anybody online?
We do, but not that they have expressed interest in speaking.
Okay, thank you. Okay, remarks of the mayor?
Good evening. The Halloween Parade was held last week, and it was a great success. I know there was a lot of banter on Facebook and on social media that we didn't hit every street in the city, and obviously, you know, it's physically impossible to do. And we did have a route posted, and, you know, we'll hopefully make some improvements next year on communication. But, you know, some examples that were angering people was that we said Highland Avenue, then the next street was J Street. Some of us thought it was obvious that we were going to go down Highland Avenue till we got to J Street. But some people thought that we were going to go all the way down Highland Avenue and then come back to J Street. So I guess you can look at it as the route may have been a little confusing, but that's not the important part. The important part is that when you watch the video put up by Parks and Rec, and you watch the expression on the kids' faces and on the parents' faces, you'll see that it was just an outstanding event, full of volunteers and donated goods from the community. And I wanted to thank all the agencies involved, Parks and Rec, Middletown Police Department, DPW, Fire Department, for, you know, a job well done, and all those within City Hall who made contributions. It was a tremendous night, and next year, we hope to see many more happy faces. Build a Home for Skye is, you're all familiar with it, and some of the public may not be. But the city has donated a piece of property to this project on Broad Street. And I just wanted to read into the record once again, because the project is now moving ahead with a law firm has been hired, the supplemental trust has been set up. So on Saturday, November 17th, 2018, a Skye Mendoza's life changed forever when she was involved in a car accident that claimed the life of her pregnant stepmother and left her paralyzed from the neck down. Skye, who was 17 years old and a stage four paraplegic, spent 18 months in a rehab facility and now shares a small apartment with her father and brother in Middletown. And they were residents of the city prior. After seeing Skye's desperate need for help, the city recently donated a 0.15 acre site to a trust set up for Skye. The Mendoza family is now looking to raise the $130,000 to build a wheelchair-accessible home for the family of three. And this foundation has been set up, accepting donations. I know the Walk Hill Fire Company, I believe, this past year used as a fundraiser. So they're raising money, but the quicker we can raise money for the family, the quicker than Skye can be into the home that she so needs and deserves. Her stepmom was very active in Middletown Little League and other programs throughout the city, a lot of youth programs. And the family has been a longtime Middletown resident, so if you're in a position to help, whether it's $5, $10, or whatever, please consider doing so. You know, today, let me go into this Warming Center project first. As you know, November 21st, I believe, the Warming Center will be opening on Mulberry Street. It is the site of the former senior center. And we know the history, that being in the St. Paul's basement and then relocating to the temple, we made a commitment to the people in the neighborhood of the temple that it would not be there the following year. We were hoping to have it out sooner, but due to problems getting, you know, the appropriate materials, that it was delayed until this year. Well, we toured it the other day, and it's done. It's ready to occupy. The volunteers from GMIC have been there, working on it, and it actually looks very nice. But as we put this project together, HUD Washington, the Housing and Urban Development, who fund the CDBG program in the city, and it's a national program, obviously, they decided that the CDBG Best Practices webinar series that they hold for public facilities and improvements, that this would be a project that they would like to highlight in their webinar. So I'm going to ask Maria to come up briefly and just to go through maybe a couple slides with you. Because Maria and her team in the Community Development Office put together not only the funding, but managed the program from day one. We came in with a concept. They made the concept work, working with the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council. Jerry was very much involved in it, so I want to thank him for all his hard work on it also. But we know the project is going to be a success at Mulberry Street, but I think it deserves some recognition that Middletown, the city of Middletown, is one of five communities in this webinar series nationwide through HUD. So Maria, come on up and just say a few words for it at this point. Is she here?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, we were five out of the nation. We had the state of Minnesota, Providence, Rhode Island, East Providence, I'm sorry, West Des Moines, Iowa, the state of Pennsylvania, and us presented to the nation our best practices. We were chosen, our field office, HUD New York, submitted our project to HUD Washington, and we were chosen as one of the five. Basically, it was for best practices, the best use of our funds and how we apply our funds and how we're managing our funds. As you know, we received in COVID funds from HUD, CDBG, CV funds, $542,740, and a large portion of that went towards the warming station project. Actually, we've already, to date, spent over 44% of that money, which is good when it comes to timeliness with the federal government. So we're on track to meeting our goals there as well. But they wanted to know what our challenges were, and the challenge was that the existing warming station was not COVID-safe. The temporary was only available short term, and then we had some supply chain shortages and delaying building materials in the timeline. And then we did have some difficulty getting reasonable contractor bids. So they wanted to know how we faced those challenges and then basically show our best practices. It was we communicated between the city, the mayor, and the city council with all the various organizations, GMIC, the temple, St. Paul's. We utilized connections with social media throughout the city. We had a program structure already in our department, because as you know, we run the rehab program through our existing CDBG allocation. So that was already in place. And then what we decided to do, because of the supply chain and the demands and that, and also the bidding process, we decided to phase the construction. So we did this project in phases, which helped us with our timeline and also pricing. So if you remember, I believe our first bid came in at over $800,000 back in January. So with phasing this project, and I believe in COVID funds, it's like half we spent on this project. So you could see, by doing this, we were able to save the federal government and the city half the funds. We, again, coordinated with construction workers and the different trades, and, you know, shout out to my department, to Mike and Patty, for managing this program and oversight. And it was just an honor to be chosen by HUD and for showing how the city can utilize grant funds in a proper way and manage them properly. And it was just pretty awesome to present. I believe they told me there was over 700 on the webinar, 1,200 signed up for it. So the final piece of this is it's going to be packaged up and sent to Congress. They're going to be doing a report on the webinar, and they're putting a report on all the best practices on all five of us, and it's going to be submitted to Congress within a month or so. So stay tuned.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So that was all good news, and as you know, we were supportive of the project. The city put a few bucks into this project, too, to move it along even quicker. And Maria's department and Mike Sahorchuk, they did, and Patty Racine did an excellent job. So now we come to the sweet time of things, and that is the marijuana legislation. I understand I was at the New York Conference of Mayors' last meeting, so I was unable to be here. So I watched the meeting online, and I was surprised that Mr. Ayala took a couple cheap shots. But it is election time, so, you know, nonsensical statements, usually just rub off my, roll down my back, and I try to ignore them. But before I get into the comments that he made, I just wanted, I forwarded a letter to you folks from a woman, I'm not going to say where she lives, but she lives in Middletown. And this is the problem we're going to face with the marijuana legislation. She talks about where she lives and how she talks to her landlord. She lives in a multifamily building. "In the past few months, there's been smoking of marijuana on the ground floor of the building. The landlord does not want smoking in the hallways. I live on the top floor, and because smoke rises, it lingers on the floor where I reside. My children and myself must walk through a cloud of smoke when we enter or leave my apartment. I have a 14-year-old son and a 10-year-old daughter. In addition to myself, it affects any person that visits. My father is 72 years old. He must inhale that, that smoke, when he visits. He has emphysema. The smoke enters my apartment due to the frequency and the amount of people that are smoking." And it goes on, and it goes on and on and on. You all saw it, and I'm sure you're all moved by it. That's one of the problems of the marijuana legislation, and I know us opting out is not changing that, but we are working on legislation that may be helpful to city residents in that area. Because a landlord can designate his building, or their building, his or her building, as smoke-free. By doing so, that would mean tobacco and marijuana. But by doing so, the question becomes, who is the enforcing agency? And how does it, how do you respond to someone doing so? And what rights to the, is it the police? Is it code enforcement? How do we go about it? So our legal counsel is working on all that, so we're going to come up with some interesting ways to apply local laws, if we can. So that leads into Mr. Ayala's inaccurate statements. And because when you allow inaccurate statements by a candidate for office to just lay out there, and they linger, and then they, all of a sudden, they become fact in some people's minds. And, you know, it's not a coincidence that he's running for office, that he made these statements. It's not a coincidence he did it on the night that I wasn't here, because no one could refute his allegations. But I think that speaks more to the character of the person making the charges. But he stated that night that because of the passage of the opt-out law and the city's delay in voting, that they only had 10 days to gather signatures. It's not true. The opt-out law gave everyone 45 days from the date of passage. Matter of fact, I think it was the date of filing a local law, the date of signing of the local law. So you had 45 days to sign it. So it still stands that not one signature was collected by Mr. Ayala or any of his characters that came with him to that meeting and supported the marijuana legislation. And he was emphatic about that. He stood here at the mic and looked at the people and spoke to the public at home and said, "Basically, the city screwed me. They screwed us, the advocates of this program. We got screwed." And we can disagree on whether it's a good or a bad program, but you can't sit up here and lie. So he has to be corrected that he had 45 days, and he collected as many signatures in 45 days as he did in 10 days, and that was zero. He also stated that they were busy working on election. "So we'll do it next year. We'll go out and get signatures next year in order to place this on the ballot." He obviously hasn't read the law or has no familiarity, he's not familiar with how local laws work. And you don't expect a layperson to be familiar with that process. It can be confusing at times. But local laws are not subject to annual referendum in New York State. We don't have initiative and referendum like California, where you can force things to the ballot. So you had one shot, and that was the whole point of opting out. You had one shot to opt out, but you got multiple shots to opt in, or at least two shots to opt in. You can opt in now, or you can opt in at any point in the future. So again, whether it's a lie or just not doing his homework, it's absolutely irresponsible to make that kind of statement. He stated, "The libertarians who came here are from Middletown, or in some form representative of Middletown." And then the next line is, "Well, Peter is from Newburgh." Well, I guess, Newburgh's not Middletown. If Newburgh wants to do what they want to do, go to the Newburgh City Council and talk there. Give your opinion here. Someone else from the Ninth Judicial District representing the libertarians, I don't care what the libertarians have to say. I'll listen to them. I'll do this. I'll do whatever it takes in a cordial manner. But the bottom line is, I'm more concerned about what people who live in the city of Middletown have to say, like the lady whose letter I just read. That's what I'm concerned about. And I think the math on the meeting that night was 16 speakers, and three were from Middletown. And I'll take those odds that the voices of Middletown were heard, and were heard, and understand that we opted out with the possibility of opting back in if we so choose at some point. I have my own opinion, and everybody here has their own opinion on how we move forward. But it certainly is not correct what Mr. Ayala said that night. And I didn't know that working on a campaign would preempt you from going out and getting the accurate information to go to a public meeting and tell the people who you're asking for support from that a lie. And that's what he did. He looked people in the eye, and he lied. He also stated that I should debate himself or Colleen Hughes. Well, he's been coming to meetings here for quite a while. He didn't ask for a debate prior to that. I would have been more than happy to debate him on the marijuana legislation, but that legislation is done. But I did meet with Colleen Hughes. And let me tell you about my three, four-hour meeting with Colleen Hughes. Mr. Massey was there, and we had a good meeting. But what he doesn't say when he mentions Colleen Hughes's name is, "Colleen Hughes is a representative of the marijuana industry." She's not a person who is an informed citizen with an opinion. She's a person who makes her living in the marijuana industry. So she certainly is not an objective person. She's a person who you can get feedback from and input from. But to show you, so we did. We had, as I said, probably three hours, and it was a good meeting. A lot of exchange and ideas, and we told her our opinions on different things. But the one thing that I did ask Colleen Hughes to do that day, and it seems to be a pattern here with people who don't like my position at least, is I did ask Colleen Hughes, when you go to the public hearing and you speak, that you should at least upfront tell the public that you are not there as the average citizen. You're there as a representative of the medical, not medical marijuana, you're a representative of recreational marijuana. And she didn't, she promised me she would, and she did not. I had to come up after her and point it out. So when people deal that way, it certainly goes to their credibility. When people come here and lie, we can disagree, but they just don't come up here and lie about it. So that's, hopefully, we'll put it to bed. I think tomorrow is on election, so the, you know, people have the choice in these matters, but I could not let that go without responding to it. Tomorrow, as I said, is election day. Please exercise your right to vote. If you need a ride to the polls, there are polls available, rides available. Just search on the internet. If you need, I'm not sure if the senior bus is running tomorrow. Are we, we are running the senior bus? So call the senior center. It's apolitical. There's no partisanship involved. 346-4170, or not, what is it? 4070? Maria, you're 4170, right? I was looking at Mass. 4070. 4070. I should have known that worse, right? But, well, if it's the wrong number, just call information. But it's on the website, yeah. So we will give you a door-to-door service, bringing you to your election district, if you so choose. We also have, you have a resolution tonight appointing Richard P. McCormick, Middletown resident, to an important position. As I mentioned at one of the previous meetings, our clerk of the common counsel, John Numcheck, is retiring after 11 years plus, maybe around 11 years, of service to the city. So we wanted to thank John as he enters his retired, as a retired person, and wish him the best. And we have also bringing Rick McCormick on as the new clerk. Rick comes from, lives in the city, currently working in Mount Vernon, and will be an excellent addition to the staff. So hopefully, you'll vote tonight and approve Rick's appointment. And the last matter is COVID. It's getting better, but still not great. There's almost 5 million worldwide and about, what is it, about 750,000 deaths in the United States. So please do what you can and wear a mask if possible when you're in large groups, and have a nice election day. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Remarks of the Department of Economics, Economic Development.
Good evening. The mayor mentioned that the warming station will be opening November 21st. We're going to have a ceremony on November 19th at 11:00 a.m. at the location, so we'll be sending out invites to everyone, and we're looking forward to cutting the ribbon there. The Paramount, a week ago, had a soft reopening with their movies, and we're doing great and getting back into the swing of things. And we're looking forward to the rest of the year in 2022. We're starting to work on the, well, we've been working on the tree lighting and parade for the Santa Parade and such on November 26th, working with Jacob and his department on, we should have some word on a tree by the end of the week, but we're still, you know, looking at trees, and if we've been advertising, we're looking for like a 35-foot or more spruce tree. So to donate, go to our website, and you can learn more about that as well. But it's great to see that we're going to be able to pull off the lighting this year and the parade. And we're just finalizing the guidelines for that, the COVID guidelines, so we can have a safe night as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. So I'm just going to update you very quickly on the projects that are taking place in the city of Middletown. To start off, the DEC, finally, the mayor and I have been meeting with them literally for years and working on safe yield analysis and a lot of studies and revalidating the models for our safe yields and our reservoirs and so on and so forth. And finally, we got the water withdrawal permit from the DEC at the safe yield that we were looking for, which is 4.2 million gallons per day, which is a huge accomplishment for us. There are strings attached to this permit, which we have to install flow meters all over our reservoirs, and that is something, we have one year to accomplish that, and we will be doing that. We have also to firm up our, we have to firm up our mill pond water-taking permit as well to change it from supplemental to permanent water-taking permit. And that will be, we will be pursuing that on a fast pace, so we can comply with the DEC schedule. But we are very excited again about the 4.2. It's a great accomplishment for us, 4.2 million gallons to be our safe yield. Just to give you an idea, our consumption right now is around 2.7 million gallons per day, and we have up to 4.2. We have most of the water committed for, for future development, but we still have a cushion, and we will be looking at the different water, raw water resources as well. The capital projects, obviously Alderman Massey, the reservoirs are full, and with the huge amount of rain that we had lately, about eight and a half inches in the last week, almost of October, that's a huge amount of water. And that caused our New York Rising Projects, which is West Main, West Main Street Bridge Replacement and Grant Street Culvert Replacement, to be shut down because of the huge amount of water that was flowing through. But they're starting, both of them, again, and hopefully tomorrow we'll have more progress on the West Main. But everything is in very good shape with these two projects, except for the rain. The high-pressure water main, the 24-inch high-pressure water main on 211 Monhagen Avenue just outside the city, tomorrow should be the last day where we are using one lane. We're putting our water main in one lane of the state highway on 211. Once we're done, we're going to be shifting over to the sidewalks, so you're going to have two-way traffic reestablished, hopefully, the day after tomorrow. We appreciate the public perseverance and working with us and being very patient and respecting the safety of the workers there and the flagmen and so on. We appreciate it very much, but it's something that has to be done for improving our infrastructure for another 100 years. The leaves, we started the leaves pickup. The schedule is online. Please be very careful not to put the leaves, piles of leaves, as they come more, down more and more near intersections. Keep them within four foot of the curb. If your street is narrow, keep it within three foot or two feet of the curb, please, because you've got students in there, you've got children, you've got school buses, you've got cars, some cars still drive crazy, unfortunately, so they will not see the little kids jumping, you know, between the piles of leaves. We're going to go as fast as we can, but please bear that in mind, especially if there are young children in the neighborhood or in that block. Be very careful of that. So also, the Department of Public, Department of Health, they have conducted their annual inspection of our water system, which includes the water treatment plant and the entire reservoir system and the water distribution system, tanks and so on and so forth. They've done that last week. Everything went very smoothly, and we're very happy with that. Part of our regulations also to upgrade our emergency response plan for our, for our water system, which is the water treatment plant under reservoirs. We have to do that once every five years, so we did that on time, and we submitted that for DOH, the local department, and then it goes to New York State for review and approval. So that was only an update for it. And before you tonight, there is an important resolution for the traffic operations. It's awarding the bid for Boyce Excavation an amount of over $26 million. It's a huge project in there, but its traffic operation is one large component of it for about 19, for about $21 million. The rest of the money is, the mayor allocated some money from the American Recovery Plan, and the other money is from the, from the DRI. So altogether, about over $26 million. And we are short some funds in there, which we are trying to get from Orange County Transportation Council. Hopefully, in the coming weeks, the mayor will be updating you on that. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. If you have any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you. Good luck for everybody tomorrow.
City Treasurer?
The mayor, Chairman Massey, and I have met with all the department heads to go over our 2022 budget. Preliminary budget is on the website. If anybody has any questions, I can send them copies, emails. Please reach out to me, and we will be talking about it at the next Board of Estimates meeting. And that's it.
Any question for Colleen? Thank you, Colleen. Police Chief?
Good evening. I actually have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any question for the Police Chief? Thank you, Chief. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to congratulate and thank Eagle Scout Liam Doty from Troop 157, who recently completed his Eagle Scout project with the Recreation Department. If you haven't noticed, he created three free libraries. They're self-standing libraries that are in three of our parks, Maple Hill, Davidge Park, and Amshire. We fill them with books. We've already had to refill them three times. They're self-opening for the public, for the Kids Go. They're placed next to benches. The kids have been reading books, taking them. People in the community have also been donating books as it gets low, so they take a book and end up putting new books back in. So thank you and congratulations to Liam Doty. And we'd also like to congratulate the new Mayor's Youth Council officials for 2021 and 2022. President is Cara Abindam, and Vice President is Anaya Gonzalez. Huge thank you to the Middletown Police Department for the department and DPW, and with all with the rec, we had a very successful Halloween parade. And thank you to all the communities and all the departments who donated candy for us. And if you haven't checked out our YouTube page, the video is up. And like the mayor was saying, the smile on the kids' faces, and if you listen closely, Joe Adapiertcho, who made the video, you can hear the kids' voices in the video also, and the excitement from the kids and the parents in the video. Right now, we are pretty much wrapping up all of our fall programming, and we are starting to schedule our winter programs. And if, on the city website is a direct link to our BASS website that does all our programming for winter and everything we have going on right now. And that's all.
Any question for Rayland? Thank you, Rayland. City Clerk?
Just a reminder that tomorrow is voting, and if anyone has any questions on their location of where they want to vote, they can call my office at 346-4166, and we will tell them by word and address where they need to vote if they're not sure. That's all I have. Thank you.
Question for John? Okay, thank you, John. Remarks of Alderman? Alderman Burr?
Just go out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes, encouraging everyone to go out and vote. This year, it was very interesting, because Spira and I, we've been campaigning and knocking on doors for months. And it's interesting, everyone that we talked to, I'll say 99.9% was very positive of what's going on in the city, and that makes us very proud, that we have so many projects going on. I mean, we have so many positive things going on in the city, and we heard from our constituents. And it's a heartfelt feeling to feel that we're doing what we're supposed to do, and we're doing a great job at it. And thanks to everyone. Please go out tomorrow and show us the love. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I just want to add to the voting that, don't forget, there are six propositions on the back of your ballot in Middletown. New York State has five of them. One is about apportionment and redistricting, trying to make it fairer and absolutely nonpartisan. There's one about the right to clean air and water. There's one about longer voter registration period, right up to, and maybe including Election Day. The one about no excuse absentee voting, so like during the pandemic, if you want to vote absentee, you can. You don't have to say, "I'll be away," or any excuse. The fifth one is the New York City Civil Court being able to hear things from $50,000 rather than $25,000 limit, which would free up a lot of time on the Supreme Court. But number six in Middletown, which is very important, is the increase to the LoSAP for the volunteer firefighters. It's the sort of fund that they can get on completing however many years it is and however many fires they have to show up to. But there are a lot of requirements, and it's really the least we can do for our volunteers. So I urge everyone, if you don't do any of the others, make sure you vote for Proposition Six. The warming station, and so people know, it's 8 to 10 Mulberry Street. It's the old Mulberry House. It's where the Land Trust was for a while. It was the Mills House for many years. There are additional training sessions, and they do need overnight volunteers. That's the biggest need right now. There will be training sessions at 7:00 p.m. at Mulberry, at 8 to 10 Mulberry on Wednesday, November 3rd, Wednesday, November 10th, on Monday, November 15th, and then after it opens on Tuesday, November 30th. So if you want to sign up, if you've been to one and want to sign up, you can always go to themiddletownwarmingstation.com, and you'll find all the information there. And thank you to Andrew, who maintains the site. We have a lot of resolutions tonight. A lot of them are transferring money within the departments from one line to another line. You know, the $26 million sounds like a lot of money for the intersections projects until you see that the high bid was, I think, $47 million. So thank you, Boyce. We really didn't do so badly. But all that information and all the details on the transfers, if you're really interested, because there are a lot of things that we'll just say transferring, and we'll probably, we'll probably pass all of them. But if you really want to see what they are about, you can go on the website. You can look at the agenda, and it has all the letters explaining them and requesting them. So it's there for as much as you want to find out about it. Andrew and I will be having our constituents meeting next Monday, November 8th, at 7:00 p.m., right here in council chambers. And lastly, remember, a week from Thursday, before our next meeting, a week from Thursday is Veterans Day, and there are two Veterans Day ceremonies, celebrations, being conducted in the city. One is at Post 151 at the Middletown American Legion on Wayway on the Avenue, and the other one will be at the Elks Club, and they will both be at 11:00 a.m. So take your pick, but please go out and support our veterans. Thank you.
Alderman Ramchuson?
Good evening. I did have the opportunity to do early voting, which was great. Looks like we had a pretty solid turnout, and, you know, a good number have already spoken their voice in this election, and that's always a good sign for democracy. And Paul and I have been a really good team here in the Third Ward over the years, and working together has been a lot of fun, you know, getting out and being with our community and trying to solve problems as we get them. And, you know, walking around and knocking on doors and talking to people is just a reminder that the people in this city are a huge reason why I love Middletown so much, because we come from every walk of life, every kind of background. And, you know, if someone were to tell me that they felt that there was division or that we were in any way divided, then I would argue that they are not very connected to this city. Because we are a community that rallies around when someone is in need. A perfect example is raising money for Sky. We come together in wonderful ways. If you go to a Friday night concert down at John Dagnan Square, if you come to our parades, go to Nights Out Against Crime, our tree lighting, which I'm excited is back, or any of our Midi sporting events, then you would see that Middletown is vibrant, beautifully diverse, and it's a city on the rise. And that is a credit to our mayor and our council president and their leadership, and to all the city workers that take pride in what they do here. And I just, I hope to see us all come back and keep up the good work that we're doing here, and go Midi Pride.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. I want to also congratulate the administration and Maria for the HUD recognition. Five in the country out of hundreds. That's pretty impressive. I'll share the comments of Alderman Ramchuson and Alderman Johnson. We have rung a lot of doorbells the last five months in the Third Ward, pretty much positive. I mean, we've done a lot of good things in the last two, four, six, eight, 10 years. So I haven't heard anybody thinking we weren't holding our own with accomplishments and quality of life. I'm very excited about the thought of the ice skating rink. I did my college days up in the Finger Lakes at Cornell. It's a small city. We had an outdoor rink. I agree with everything that was said about more glue, quality of life, go skating, hot cocoa, get a burger. I assume those were outdoor, and I think if we can pull off an outdoor ice skating rink in the city of Middletown, it's way better than indoor. No offense to Newburgh Ice Time. I also wanted to let you know that I ran into Athletic Director Coats last week. You may or may not remember it, a year or two ago when the States were here, we collaborated with the, with the school district, and we distributed, I think it was 1,000 dining guides. Mr. Coats reported to the school board that those weekends with the States are extremely beneficial economically to the region, and if we can showcase some of our restaurants to people that are staying in a hotel or motel for a night or two for their kids, it was a very positive experience two years ago, and we appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with them once again this year. And lastly, there's a guy named McCormick on the agenda. Rick and I have shared a previous life under different circumstances, but I want to say I'm very excited about him joining the team. I have every level of confidence that he will present a very smooth transition and welcome aboard. Thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I do look forward to seeing everyone here next Monday for our constituent meeting. Please join us 7:00 p.m. here on the 8th. Congratulations to the mayor, Maria, on that warming station, the CDBG program. That's, I mean, after a long year, a lot of ups and downs, what a wonderful way to really show your efforts and be rewarded for them. And I know everyone with the Warming Station Committee is really excited and very happy with the, with the new home, and I think it's going to be great overall for everyone. I did stop at the Paramount and view No Time to Die, and I will say that definitely, if anything I took away from it, was that it was one of the best movie-going experiences I've had, and the sound system in there is phenomenal. So if you get a chance to watch a movie, wow, it's really amazing there. So take the opportunity to go in. And like everyone else said, Election Day is tomorrow. Please go out and vote, you know, and definitely, to echo Alderman Kleiner, you know, please turn over that ballot and do your best to support the propositions on the back. That's all for this evening. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
Hope you enjoyed Halloween. I sure did. It was great to see all the little kids running around in their costumes. My kids are getting a little older, so they want to hang out with me, but it was fun passing out candy and seeing the youngsters. I'd like to congratulate Liam Doty for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, he's in my son's troop, 157. That's great what he did. And then, I mean, I'm just going to preach a little bit, but as just advice to local candidates, I try to stay positive and run on a positive note. When you go negative, and especially in a local race, it's, you know, I think it backfires on you. You know, in the end of the day, we're all neighbors. We go to the same supermarket. Our kids go to the same schools. You know, we're basically living together, and that kind, you know, you don't gain anything by tearing people down. It doesn't build you up. So I think, run on, my advice to anybody running for office, run on what you stand for and keep it positive. Thank you.
Alderman Massey?
Jerry, I want to thank you for bringing up, next Thursday, the 11th, is Veterans Day a week from this. It actually leads me into something that I wrote, and I want to read, and I hope you'll bear with me for, I think it takes me about a minute and a half. I would like to take a moment to thank Vinnie Napolitano for submitting a letter to the editor acknowledging that I am and have been, for many years, the only military veteran Middletown elected official. I want to inform you something about Vinnie that few people actually know. He is one of the highest decorated Vietnam veterans in our area. He was awarded the Purple Heart Medal. The Purple Heart Medal is presented to service members who have been wounded or killed as a result of enemy action while serving in the U.S. military. A Purple Heart is a solemn distinction and means a service member has greatly sacrificed themselves or paid the ultimate price while in the line of duty. And Vinnie was also awarded the Bronze Star with Valor. The Bronze Star with Valor is awarded for valor or bravery during combat actions against an enemy force. It is the fourth highest- It is the fourth highest award for military combat bravery. Only one in 40 Bronze Stars awarded are with a valor device. Tomorrow's Election Day, no matter who you vote for, I believe it's not only your privilege and honor to cast your vote, but also your duty because of the sacrifices the brave men and women like Vinnie have made for us. Thank you.
Thank you. New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Jon Francois to amend the city code, chapter 460, vehicles and traffic, to add stop signs.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jon Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jon Francois to award the bids for the traffic operations, share one, Streetscape, share two, and A R P funded, share three to Boyce Escavation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jon Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $10,000 within the 2021 budget for expenses related to consulting contract with R B T to review the city's A R P A.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to authorize the treasurer to transfer $60,000 within the fire department 2021 budget to cover overtime through December 2021.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $236,675 within the 2021 budget to cover existing overdrafts.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Casson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer $60,000 within the 2021 Middletown Police Budget to cover the shortages within the overtime budget line for the remainder of the year.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun to declare two Middletown Police Vehicles surplus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassun, seconded by Alderman Jon Francois. Discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the mayor to execute upon Corporation Council's review all rental and related agreements for the Paramount Theater for the 2022, 2023 season, which will be January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2023.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to amend the city code, updating the city of Middletown Parking Ordinances.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jon Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jon Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $95,000 within the D P W 2021 budget to fund repairs to city buildings and new equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassun?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?